For all to hear.
What does it mean?
For all to hear.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I know. We are on hot mics.
Well, it's three o'clock and time for our monthly regular meeting of the Board of Library Trustees. Can we have the roll call?
Certainly. Mr. Eisbart?
Present.
Mr. Williams?
Present.
Ms. Tucker?
Present.
Mr. Moss? Mr. Castleman?
Present.
Mr. Seifert?
I'm here.
And myself. Six out of seven.
Six present, one absent, okay? In adopting the agenda, there is a change under approval of minutes, item D. We did not have enough signatures on that, so that'll be moved to item five, approval of claims. So we'll have two sets of claims by. With that as the change, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. And if there are no objections, let's group A, B, and C, approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor then signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed by nay? Okay. David, you're up.
All right.
Item four.
Thank you, Ben. In the financial report, really, as far as the reports are concerned, one line only is gone into the ahead of schedule, spending ahead of schedule, and that's the vehicle service line, and that's directly related to the renovation, the changeover of the library at home van. If you recall, we got the ARPA grant money for that, and so, you know, we'll just need to move some money into that at year-end transfers and all. So it's not technically overspending, we're just needing to appropriate the money. Other than that, everything is spending on benchmark. The main items we're working on, of course, are budget items. Many of you were met yesterday with us regarding the, at the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting, discussing the overall budget. Susan and I are going to be meeting with the Department of Local Government Finance on Thursday next week. We'll be applying for their approval to move ahead with the official budget, which will be a 5% increase, and likewise in the levy as well as the expenditure budget. We'll then be scheduling further meetings for the Finance and Personnel Committee into, right now, we're looking at September to further discuss the compensation benefit program. But really, those are about the only items on the budget side. Speaking of the approval of claims, we are working on the DocuSigner. Actually, we are moving toward the Adobe Pro or Adobe Sign method, which will allow us to use a signature. We don't have to have individual accounts. You won't have to set those up. So we'll be able to do the claims. Nate in IT just got back to me about 15 minutes ago and has everything working and set up for that. We just have to go and, he would feel better, I think we'd feel better, having some policy in place that says, okay, who can do those kind of activities? So we're going to develop that. But shortly, we should have that electronic signature ability to do the claims or other documents that need to have the board approval on, so.
And we could have tutorials to understand how to use it.
Absolutely. Exactly, exactly. If it looks like a check made out to me, just go ahead and send it.
Thank you, David.
No worry about it.
Thank you, David.
Yes.
Well, on that up note, how about a motion to approve the financial report? And we could discuss if there's any.
So moved.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Sharon. Any discussion or any questions?
Only question I had, Dave, just to remind me, the vehicle service, as I recall, we improved the library at home van because we weren't able to buy another one.
That's correct, yeah.
All right. How do we feel like, is that a goal in the future, next couple of years, to buy another one?
Yeah.
Do we have enough use for it? Do we want to do that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Definitely.
Yes. And library at home is getting some incredible press as of late. Thank you, Cara, for pitching an article to our local media to cover library at home. And because of that press, we are getting a lot more interest in library at home. So demand is increasing.
Are you going to start to go drive around yourself in your car, Susan?
I would love that, actually, and have all kinds of thoughts about what that could look like as far as a vehicle, yes.
No doubt.
We'll have to check our insurance. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That passes. Let's move to item five, approval of the claims.
As I said, we have the two sets, the ones of August 10th and ones of August 25th. I know we're always interested in the largest claims. On the 10th run, the largest was the insurance premiums of $340,000. Those are for the health insurance premiums. And then library materials were total $134,000. On the 25th claims, the claims of today, really, they were all fairly manageable. I and M, the electric bill at $68,000. Kinder was the construction, and that was to finish up the story scape for the older early learning center, literature center, and then library materials. So those were the main items on the claims this time.
Okay, we'll circulate those. Then we can come back and get a motion and a second.
Oh, all right.
Okay. How about introduction of our newest staff member?
Absolutely. She is on day nine, I believe, of her time here at Allen County Public Library. I would like for all of you to meet Aja Michael Keller. She is our new Director of Communications, and I ask if she could just say a few words of introduction.
Hi, I'm Aja Michael Keller, and new Director of Communications here, and so happy to be part of the team at the library. And I come from Ivy Tech Community College most of my time, 11 years there. Most of my time there was spent with the Fort Wayne campus and have been here in Fort Wayne since 2006. Prior to Ivy Tech, I was at the YWCA locally doing everything from racial justice programming to teen education and direct client service as well. So a life in nonprofits and in community service. So I'm just loving my time here at the ACPL. Personally, I have a wife and a couple of young kiddos, and we are Disney lovers and getting ready for football season to start because we're Irish fans, so go Irish. And, yeah, getting settled.
You have Jim's vote.
Okay, good.
And mine.
Go Irish. I feel good about this season, you know? We've got a new era starting, and that's very exciting under a new coach, so. Any questions or anything I can tell you about myself that you'd like to know?
No, just welcome. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, welcome, welcome, welcome. How about item seven, NIC and our library partnership? Nate?
Sure. And Nate, I'll let you introduce our guest.
All right. With me today is Michael Fritsch, the CEO and President of the Northeast Indiana Innovation Center. And I am very excited to talk to you guys today about our partnership with the NIC. So let me just get these PowerPoints up and visible. So for those of you who have been with the library for a little bit, the library entered into a formal signed partnership agreement with the NIC in 2018. And at that time, we had several goals, which I've outlined here on the PowerPoint, that we thought would be mutually beneficial for supporting entrepreneurs and opportunity within Allen County and the surrounding region. The library's commitment was to help define a collaborative process of entrepreneur support and coaching, integrating ACPL librarian staff into NIC operations and spaces so that way we can better represent the resources and staff capacity that we have to help support entrepreneurship here in Allen County. And also work with the NIC to develop a process of business support and education across the ACPL system. On the NIC's end, there was a commitment to create an intake process so that our library staff could more effectively refer entrepreneurs to the tremendous resource that is available at the Northeast Indiana Innovation Center, to provide business coaching and scheduling office hours to work one-on-one with entrepreneurs in ACPL spaces, to offer scheduled workshops at the library and a variety of entrepreneurship topics, and to offer workshops to youth, to introduce them to concepts in entrepreneurship through library programs and events. These are great goals. When we met, there were some sit-down conversations, and then it was like, okay, we have these goals. How do we make it? What do we do to get this started? And so we had some humble beginnings when we began this process. With the office hours, we average one to two entrepreneurs a week. It may not seem like much, but if you're working in entrepreneurship, you understand that one entrepreneur's success story makes a tremendous impact on that individual and the community in which they live and work. So that was a great start for us. Our staff toured each other's spaces. We learned about what each organization offered. And that has tremendously helped us in understanding who we can refer people to, how we can support businesses, and just concepts in entrepreneurship that our staff may not have been familiar with at the time. I know last month, we talked about the business value that the ACPL provides to the community. A lot of that value was fostered through our work with the NIC, conversations we've had with their staff, and work that has then sprung from those seeds. And then our staff worked with the NIC in a variety of grant projects and assessment, of which I'll talk a little bit in a second, too. We have grown tremendously since then. So in 2019 was a real major changing point for this partnership. The breakthrough grant that was sponsored by the Fuller Foundation, that allowed the ACPL, as a spoke within the grant, to connect entrepreneurs to underserved areas to the NIC, through whether it be their cohort, participating in monthly meetings with them, looking for ways to integrate ourself in the community and think differently. How can we connect people to the NIC and entrepreneurial opportunity? We had virtual programs, which in 2020s, you know, the pandemic changed the entire landscape for us. In-person programming was not an option. We were fortunate to have excellent support from NIC staff in working with our staff to get their message out, entrepreneurial concepts out, workshops on how to begin being an entrepreneur through our tech infrastructure. We averaged eight to 12 person per program. For an adult program, that is a really great attendance, especially when you're dealing with a topic of entrepreneurship and the impact it can provide. And so again, we worked with our cohort year-to-year, helping them move through the process, spreading the news of what ACPL resources we have available, how our market research capacity, our staff, you know, the variety of things we have available, public meeting spaces, Wi-Fi, internet. There's a variety of things that can help entrepreneurs start their work. So, and then the other thing that we did with the NIC was work with our youth through our Team Read program. I know this has been mentioned a couple of times. I brought my book, Libraries That Build Business. I know Susan has highlighted that before. But the work we did with trying to introduce our teens to concepts of entrepreneurship as part of our Life and Employment Skill Program through Team Read was nationally recognized and is really gaining a lot of traction momentum. You know, we've spoken on panels about that with business groups. The work that we're doing here is expanding, like, it's being nationally recognized, and it's only growing. And so that's really fantastically exciting. And we're going even further because now we are part of the Community Navigator Pilot Program. It is an SBA grant that was awarded to the NIC in October of 2021. It is a major grant. This is a tremendous honor and opportunity for us to be a part of this program. There aren't that many programs, there aren't that many libraries that are participating in pilot program grants. There are only four across the United States. We are one of them. And so our goals in this is to continue to act as a spoke, to connect people in rural underserved communities to the NIC so that way they can take advantage of the opportunity that they have in entrepreneurship to create economic impact, better their lives, all of that stuff that you can do through entrepreneurship. And we have, we are uniquely placed to do that. We have facilities, we have technical infrastructure, we have staff support that can help work with our grant partners in this. So people at Bankable, Region III Economic Development, Urban League, so many partners in this grant we're able to help support. We are using our computer technical infrastructure to help the Urban League facilitate a cohort of entrepreneurs that is in turn deepening the connection we have with our campus neighbor in the Urban League over at the Pontiac branch. We are working with the NIC. We recently supported a workshop that they did for young women entrepreneurs in STEM programming. And we're continuing to look for ways to program and support our partners in this work. Because ultimately, if an entrepreneur is successful in Allen County, it benefits everybody in the region, and we want to be helpful in supporting, connecting those people to opportunity. So with that being said, I want to hand it over to Mike. He can talk a little bit about this partnership from the perspective of the Northeast Indiana Innovation Center and how we are working with them, and I appreciate it. Welcome, Mike. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Nate. So the big thing I want to kind of get across is, well, why did we think the library would be a great partner? And what are we thinking for the future? Because what we have, I think as Nate said, you haven't seen anything yet because there's a lot more to come. This is a Community Navigator Pilot Program grant, and it's the SBA's biggest program, and they really want to see a lot of things happen in the future for it. We picked the library as a partner because we have a big strategy in helping underserved entrepreneurs, and you'll figure out that most people are underserved. And so we divide the community, the greater community, Northeast Indiana, Allen County, into a community of communities, whether it's racial, geographical, income-based, whether it's gamers, whether you're, whatever it is. People work better if we help them in a community and have cohorts of people. And what we found was, we thought we could just say, we're the NIC. We're here to help you. Come and we'll help you. Well, nobody came. You know? What we found was that there has, there's a level of trust that wasn't there. There's a level of understanding on our part of how to interface with different groups and different people. And so what we did was create a strategy of using trusted connector organizations where, you know, there is already a level of trust, and there's already people coming in. And the library was a perfect one because you already have, believe it or not, a great level of trust from people. So that's why we, you know, chose the library and really have a lot of great things going forward for this. So we're happy to be here. I could talk for an hour, but I'm going to leave it at that. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I have one. So say somebody comes to me and they have some project, they're entrepreneurial, wants to start a business. Who exactly do I have to send them to, to talk to? Do I say, give Mike a call, or is there, go to the website, or what? How do you start that?
Yeah, we have a process. Well, first of all, the library is already, you know, has a process in, for them, to refer them to us. Otherwise, you know, yeah, they can go through the website, they can just call us. And those are the two main mechanisms that people use. Google us.
Okay. All right.
Mike, do you have any examples of projects that were, or businesses that were brought to you in this manner and how they have grown?
You know, that would have been a good thing for me to have in my pocket right now. I know people that I've talked to personally and met with. Many people, you know, many of them are not starting companies that create 100-person companies. Many of them are starting a one-person company, a two-person company. And for most of them, it's a journey of getting from, I, you know, I didn't even think I could do it, to, you know what, maybe I can. And hey, look, three of the friends that I know are doing it, so let me start. So, yeah, there's a lot of those kind of people that is, hey, I just want to start a barber shop. Can you help me? And that we've started. I don't know any off the top of my head, but I can, we can definitely get you some that came through this program.
Thank you.
You talk about rural outreach in there. What specifically are you doing with our rural branches that are a part of this program? Yeah, so what we are doing is trying to find ways to work through some of the internet desert issues that you have in rural communities. That's a real issue and concern. So a lot of the technology purchasing that we have done has been focused on that. Rolling out in the next quarter, we're going to be really dialing down on putting circulating laptops into production. We have to work through some circulation process issues and technical stuff on our end. But once we have that, we're going to seed those at Monroeville, Woodburn, Pontiac branches so that way people who tend to be in internet deserts may have access to computers and hotspots. And beyond that, we're continuing to look for ways that we can program and provide support to those communities. And those are hard to project. You know, when you see a need, you take it. And so a lot of that is also going to depend on the work we're doing with the managers of those branches, too. And in the next year, I think, is when we really begin to fold a lot of that in. This first part of the grant work has been putting in a lot of the technical logistics, you know, getting the support structure in place and trying to figure out how we can work with our grant partners. And now that we're doing that, then I think the next step is going to be moving further out into like our individual communities, like we've started to do with the Urban League at Pontiac. And so Monroeville and Woodburn would be next. Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, observations? Well, thank you, fellas, for presenting something.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nate.
Thanks.
All right, let's go back to item five. The claims have been circulated, questions asked, so I'll entertain, and answered. I'll entertain a motion that we approve the claims as circulated.
So moved for both.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay. Our FMP committee report. Susan or Dave?
I'll just do a quick, we met yesterday, most of you were there, and had the overview of the official budget that's going to be submitted next week with the Department of Local Government Finance. We talked about some of the benefit and compensation ideas for this year. That will be, you know, discussed in more detail. Right now, we're looking at September 20th or 21st is the next date, and that's when we'll really be drilling down into the specifics of any of the plans we have for 2023. Really, I think that was the bulk of it.
Are we sending out a doodle poll to all the board members then for that, for that next meeting? Make sure we try to get all of us there?
We're finding out the availability of Frank Johnson and our HR consultant. And as soon as we have some dates from them, then we'll send out dates to all of you to make a match.
Okay.
Okay, any questions? Thank you. Okay, Susan, staff reorganization.
Yes. Nate is up again, along with our User Experience Manager, Mike Ashby. We've been having conversations at this meeting for the past few months talking about some of our revisioning of how we deliver service here at the main library and also some reexamination about how we approach circulation services. And I've asked Mike and Nate to do a deeper dive on that for you this afternoon.
Just a second, I got to get my slideshow to look how I want it. There we go.
Great. Okay. So again, we are here to talk about the reorganization project that is currently occurring within the main library and to some extent, our branches, too. We have looked at a lot of factors leading up to this, and what we're here talking about today represents the work of many staff along the way. This is not just me, this is not just Mike or Kim. This has been a culmination of work with managers, staff conversations, top to bottom. We have met with many people to try and research how we are going to do this. So there are a couple of reasons why we are realigning our service model here at the main library. The first of which is decentralizing our circulation services. Now, there are some good reasons for doing that, we'll talk about it, but basically increasing the capacity at your branches and decreasing the wait time for services for our patrons. We want to improve that patron experience when they are visiting our libraries. There have been changes in patron library use patterns that no longer align with current service models and how we are staffing. You know, whether it be through the pandemic, use trends, collection trends, decisions that have made with where we say how to put our computers in the building. This has all changed how people use the library. And as a result, we've needed to think differently. How can we be better placed to handle what our staffing needs are going to be in the future? How can we do that effectively and responsibly? A real need, which you just saw in our presentation with the NIC, talking about Team Read, you know, we have so many opportunities for outreach and programming outside of the library that currently we are not aligned with our staffing model to appropriately meet. We can do a lot of work and a lot of impact with some different staffing models that we can talk about in a second, too. And the staffing flexibility will allow us to meet staffing needs more effectively. We are not alone. The United States has seen some real interesting times with how people are having to creatively staff their locations. The library has to think about this as well. Can we more effectively handle situations where we have programs, where we have projects, where we have, you know, call-in situations that we can staff? How can we manage that more effectively and equitably for our staff? And we can do that through centralized staffing. If we're able to work collectively as a unit, this gives us more opportunity to collect our staff resource, to plan programs, to cover for absence, many different things that we can do if we standardize a few practices. A brief overview of the timeline. These are just some highlights. This has been going on for several years, whether it be conversations, active planning, conceptual discussions. We have had, you know, conceptual discussions, looking at service model ideas, seeing what trends are happening with libraries around the United States, looking at things that we can do to help us think differently. How can we improve the Allen County Public Library experience for our patrons? We have been doing some practical logistic work. What would it take to move our collections around the building? Do we have enough space on both floors to accommodate these materials if we were to move them? We've had discussions about staffing, service points. What would we need to do if we were to move these service points around and staff them differently? What factors do we need to take into consideration to allow for effective patron service, staff safety, and meeting obligation needs for time off requests and anything else that may come up? And then within the last, like, six months, we've really ramped it up in terms of what is the practical application of this? How are we going to implement it? And that's where we are at today. So the first part of that implementation has been with our circulation services and the decentralization of that. Mike's going to talk about that for just a moment. So as Nate said, circulation services is definitely the first to see the actual impact and implementation of changes. Historically, the circulation department here at Maine not only handled the in-person interactions with patrons that came to this building, but we also supported staff throughout the system and patrons over the phone. Patrons called for material renewal, questions about their account or payment of fines with credit card. They were getting the staff here at Maine to handle those. Also, if a staff member at a branch came up against an unusual situation or circumstance that they weren't exactly sure how to handle, they called the circulation department and that helpline for support and help and walking them through that. This model worked well for years, and, but it's time to move on to something new. We are wanting to, to do this, we have moved people from Maine, these full-time staff members from Maine to our busiest locations. So now, instead of having to call into circulation department, they can turn to the staff member right behind them and say, can you help me with this? I've only done this procedure once before, and that was a year ago. How do I do it? And through that, point of need, interaction and coaching, we feel that we are able to better empower and train up our staff so that they're able to interact and, interact and overcome any situation or obstacle that comes before them. This, but even with this change to full-time circ focused staff members at the branches, they can't be at the branches all the time. So we will still have phone support, but now when you call to get that support, you might get someone here at Maine, or you might get one of those full-time specialists at a different branch location. So we're still supporting our staff, we're still supporting our customers, and we're just doing it in a new, better way to improve and empower our staff members at the point of need. The other thing that we've recently done is gone from a paper app registration process to a paper-free process for registering for library cards. This intent is to improve the time and quality of service for our patrons. What used to take several minutes and was very drawn out of filling out a paper form and entering in the computer and all this stuff, is turned into a very quick turnaround. So we're able to improve patron satisfaction, improve the speed in which they're able to get materials in their hands. And as an added bonus, we're cutting down the staff time needed to manage those papers, forms, and we're cutting down on cost of the paper for those forms. We are in week two, day four of this new procedure, and so we've been reaching out to staff members for feedback. I wanted to share a couple of the responses that were sent. Overall, everything's been positive in nature. One response was, makes things so much quicker and easier for the patrons. I feel like I understand how the registration process works. It is so much better, and of course, not as bad as I thought it was going to be. With any change, there's always some apprehension, but that proves that it's, even with that apprehension, staff are positive in this change. So there are other changes going along with this as well. We have had to re-envision how we look at the main library and how we are staffed and what our service is. And so instead of looking at staffing by department, we focused on looking at this new model based off the services we provide and how can we better support them? As was mentioned earlier, there is a real need to better support programming and outreach opportunities. We have opportunities to change and support better our collection evaluation process and how our librarians and how our librarians work with that, and how we handle our reference services and our scheduling. So we've divided it into two main sections with our adult departments, so Art, Music and Media, Business Science and Technology, and Readers Services. Those three departments will instead become Adult Services and Information Services. And with Adult Services, they would handle the program, outreach, and collection management side of the services we do. And our Information Services would handle the reference services, desk scheduling, and circulation. As was voted on recently, circulation is now part of public services. So they will be reporting up through the Information Services part of that for the local circulation work that is happening within the main library. Children's and Teen Services will still remain as distinct units, but they can now work together more closely with our Adult Services staff to collaboratively plan and support programs and outreach and opportunities. As you know, we have a new Director for Community Partnerships and Programs. The work Beth is doing to help us refine our processes will allow us to in turn take those opportunities and appropriately staff and support them. So when we have, say, opportunities with the NIC, or we have large-scale events at the library, like Fright Night, or Cherry Blossom, or any other opportunity that comes through, we can collect our staff better and put together a project management team to handle and lead those events. There's so many leadership opportunities that are going to be created through this process that will help with staff development, leadership development, it will give us point people for a lot of these things that typically previously were handed off to individuals. And now we can have them be library-wide events. The main library is a regional resource, and we have the availability of, you know, resource staff capacity and space to pull off some really tremendous and amazing programs and opportunities, and I believe this will strongly help us support that better. It will help with equity in how we are dividing our work. I mentioned collection management. We have a new circulation, a new collection services manager in Matt Etzel, and the work he's going to be able to do will be better supported by having a focused staff member here at the main library to assist with that. As you know, we have millions of books here. Prior to that, they were divided departmentally, so we had a situation where you have one department which is overseeing and evaluating an abnormally large amount of books compared to the other departments. This will allow us to equitably share that labor and also utilize the expertise of staff who may have been in another department but have subject matter expertise. This is going to be really great for the work we can do with our collection. I want to emphasize that, you know, our staff duties and job descriptions, the duties are generally speaking, going to remain the same. We still need to provide reference service, we still need to do programs and outreach opportunities, we still need to manage the collections. This will allow us to give us leadership and focal points for these aspects of the work we do, but our staff will still be expected to be able to perform these duties regardless of where they are working within the building. It just may be that they are leaders in an aspect of it, instead of expecting one librarian to lead everything. We're going to be able to focus this and allow for effective management of these systems. So if you're working in Information Services, you may be a leader in providing reference services, evaluating databases and collections that we can offer to the public, but you may be supporting our programming staff in the work they are doing, or you may be assisting in collection management projects, because, you know, we have those, there's a lot of books we got to look at. So, leadership, again, opportunities to develop. There are many benefits to this reorganization, I've touched on some of them, but, you know, I just want to really hammer down that this is going to help us align our staff resource with current and projected staffing needs. With a lot of the, you know, just generally speaking, the pandemic has kind of changed how we have to look at staffing. We need to be more flexible in allowing staff to work in multiple service points around the building, because the need has been there for our staff to do so. We want to make sure that we have staff who are appropriately trained to work in these service points. We want to make sure that we are available to meet future needs, whether they be inside the library or outside of it. So many, again, so many outreach opportunities to get out into the community, to work with our community where they are at, this will allow us to free up resource to do that. Centralized scheduling, this is going to help us create consistency in scheduling practices. You know, we are combining multiple departments, which generally speaking, they schedule just fine, but you have inequity in some things like weekend rotation and night rotations because of varying levels of staff resource within those departments. This will help us eventually to work through this process, so that way people can have a standard expectation of what their rotation will be. I know that staffing is very important. Mike and I have talked about this with many of our staff. We are working through this responsibly, because people in our staff build their lives around their staffing and schedules, and so this is something that we will be working with all of our staff to understand, you know, what their individual needs are, and also how they can help and work within the organization for new opportunities they may like to be a part of. Program coordination is also a real benefit that we are going to have from this. By having our, you know, teen, children's, and adult programming leads be able to meet together and collaborate, this is going to open the door to many new opportunities for programs and outreach. So when something comes to us that we can, you know, take advantage of, it's not going to be, oh, well, I need to find somebody within a department that is already trying to schedule internally. It can be, this is our department's responsibility and obligation to take this opportunity and to meet it. And our staff can then work together with leads, being able to obtain resource from many other staff and departments, cross-departmentally, which will help us to do that. It's going to be great. And then consistency in program management and reporting. When you have many people reporting and planning these programs, it can be a lot of work. This will help us streamline the process, so that way our stats and our numbers are efficiently handled. That's an internal benefit for us that you may not see, but for us, it's going to be a real big deal. And then outreach, you know, library at home has been doing great stuff, you know, we've done a lot of work with our Spark program and our Team Readers, but there's so much more opportunity for us to meet it. And I want to help our staff be appropriately placed to do that. Mike wants to, our whole staff, this is what we want to do, we want to work with our community. And so this service model change is something we are going to make a goal of too, to how can we get out in the community and do that better? So, that is the nuts and bolts, high-level overview. There are some positional changes that will be happening. Again, we have an Information Services Department and an Adult Services Department. We have a new manager and assistant manager for those. Those are staff who will be moving over from existing positions. Throughout this whole process, we have looked at how can we use the staffing resource we already have? So with the circulation specialists, many of them have moved to the branches. We've utilized internal resource to help support our staff systemwide. So, questions you may have for us before we hand it over to LaRae?
I have a couple, yes. Nate, Matt, change is hard. So what have you, how have you given staff opportunity to give input on this? And what's the reaction been? And how do you address, honestly, concerns? When you said positional changes, I think that popped my ears up, and I'm like, okay, that's going to make people nervous. So how do you address that?
Right, so you're right. You know, this is different and new, and we have been doing our best to be respectful of that throughout the entire process. As I showed in the timeline, we've had numerous meetings with staff, we've had one-on-one meetings with staff, we've had departmental meetings with staff, we've opened up the opportunity for email and feedback. And as this process continues, there are going to be scheduled feedback opportunities, whether that be in-person, through survey work, if they would like to do that anonymously, we have checkpoints that we're building in one month, three months, six months down the road. And we're also encouraging communication between managers and staff. As this goes along, this transition is not going to happen overnight. You know, this is something that is a work in progress. You know, we have done question and answers with Susan, with Kim, myself, Mike, managers throughout, you know, and we have taken those questions and considerations and it can, you know, we've done our best to act on them. In the end, you know, this is a direction we need to go. And along the way, if there are changes that need to be made, we have communicated with staff individually, and we will continue to do so. My door is always open, Mike says, there are email opportunities. If someone doesn't feel comfortable speaking with either of us individually, they can come to us through their managers. There are many levels and avenues of communication for this. This is very important to us.
And I think it's also important to remember that in this process, no one has been or will be demoted, no one has lost any pay. Their title might be a little different, their scope of duties might look a little different, but classification, pay, those are staying the same. I wanted to share, too, an experience I had going out to DuPont last week. So one of our longtime circulation supervisors went to DuPont as part of this reorganization. She had been at the main library for how many years, Mike? Twenty?
You didn't bear your positions yet?
Yes, yes. So she has this incredible organizational knowledge that she has brought out to DuPont. So I walked into DuPont, I walked into the staff area, and other staff said to me, it is so amazing that she is here, it is so great that we are able to go to her with these higher-level circulation questions, and she's right here. And then I walked up to her workstation in the back, and she is helping staff members with a complex circulation transaction. So to be able to take that organizational knowledge and experience that we had concentrated here at Maine and take it out to the branches directly, it's just been remarkable.
I was just going to make a comment that maybe having a few extra copies of Who Moved My Cheese might be a good one. One of the best books I've read. But I want to give kudos to you on thinking about this through a programmatic lens and through a services lens. A lot of times organizational change like this happens because there's, it's a half-to, because of either budgetary constraints or something along those lines, that's not the case here. It's about better service for our patrons. And so I think that that's, I think that deserves kudos, and for staff who are involved in this process, thank you for enduring it, because this is our mission in action. I mean, if I want to say it that way, that this is why we're here, how can we better serve patrons, how can we make sure it's, you know, better serve the system and make things happen? And I think we've all learned over the last several years that we're no longer living in a society where you can have one function in your job. You have to be cross-functional. And that was readily available during COVID, when, and as you guys stated, people were out, you had to fill positions. So I think all of us have learned that in any industry, that we have to learn different jobs as we're doing things across the organization to make sure that we're serving people the best we can. So kudos to you for thinking big on this and making sure our services are improved. Thank you.
Mike and Nate have provided incredible leadership during this process, as well as Kim Boland.
Change management is an area in and of itself, and it's a profession also. Do we have anyone within our facility that specializes in that, or is it delegated to you and Kim and others? How is that addressed?
It's become me. He's the...
I would say that change management is a collective responsibility of all of our managers. And I think I can speak for a lot of us, too, you know, this is something that we have also had to learn as we've moved along with this. You know, this has been a professional development opportunity. You know, a lot of us, this is the first time we've ever looked at the organization in this way. And so, you know, I mean, there have been some bumps, and there will probably be some bumps in the future, but we are doing our best to, like, take the feedback from those, and when we see an issue, move to correct and address it. And, you know, sometimes that's just the best you can do.
Well, congratulations on launching a rocket ship while you're building it.
Thank you.
Thank you, fellas.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Susan or LaRae?
I'm going to turn it over to LaRae. I was going to say, my piece sort of goes with Nate and Mike's, thank you. So as Nate said, instead of having a manager and assistant manager in BST and in AMM and in Readers, our ask is to adjust the staffing table, again, with the same people, just into different titles and different, slightly different roles. There'll be an Adult Services Manager, an Assistant Adult Services Manager, again, to do the adult collection and programs, and Information Services Manager and Information Services Assistant Manager to handle the service points and reference questions and things like that. So the ask is to adjust four of those current titles into these four new titles with the same staff that we have in those roles right now.
Can we place that in the form of a motion?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Discussion? Questions of LaRae?
I think you had mentioned that there were no demotions in this process or pay decreases. Are there, are some of these positions just level, they're just level exchanges, just different titles?
Yes, same pay grades, yep, yep.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, a call to question, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay, it passes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, circulation schedule.
More changes to talk about. So we are asking a request to adjust our circulation schedule to increase the borrowing limits for DVDs and Blu-rays from 10 to 20. What we've found is that, not surprisingly, DVD and Blu-ray circulation has gone down over the years, particularly with the rise of streaming. If you're interested in numbers of our physical material circulation, meaning things you can hold in your hand, everyone will be believed to know, I think, that 78% are books. So still, books are definitely the winner. DVD and Blu-ray, that is 14%. So that percentage has been shrinking over the years, but what we've found is that the percentage might be shrinking, but the people who want DVDs really depend on DVDs. Often, they do not have streaming in their households for economic reasons or for geography reasons. They may be folks who have difficulty getting to the library on a regular basis due to transportation or disability, so they want to make their trips count and get as many DVDs as possible. Also, our staff have noticed what I call Sophie's Choice at the self-checkout stations and at the circulation desks. They have all these DVDs spread out, and they have to make the choice of how many they can take home with them, because they have more than 10 and they want to check them out. Also, some of these circulation policies are legacy policies that were put into place when things cost a lot different. So at one point, DVDs were very, very expensive, and now, the average DVD costs about $14.99 for us to purchase versus books, which are about $20. So because of all that, and to respond to patron wishes, we would like to increase that DVD limit from 10 to 20 per card.
So moved.
Second? Can we have a second?
A second.
Marty's second will affect you at all.
This one would not affect me.
There's no limits on books.
But they're still limiting it to seven days, though, is what we're putting on.
Correct, you can renew, though.
You can renew online, though, right?
You can.
Any other discussion items?
Quick question, why wouldn't you increase the loan period? What's the reasoning behind not doing that?
Typically, it's to make sure that there are still items on the shelf for people to check out, because these tend to be a more highly turned-over collection. So when people come to the library, there will still be DVDs on the shelf to check out. And also, to make sure those new titles, those hot releases stay in circulation for people.
So I have the same question that Paul asked, because I knew you had mentioned that the frequency of being able to come to the library is, could be difficult for some of them. And I'm looking at this going, 20 videos in seven days is a lot to try to get in unless you're binge-watching.
And we have that, yes.
So I wonder the same thing, like, why don't we expand that?
But you can, just to be clear, we can renew it up to five times, so really, it's 35 days that somebody could keep this app.
Correct.
But you can't put them on hold now, though.
You sure can, yes.
But you can't put them on hold.
Correct, yes.
So the hot ones are going to be put on hold to come back in at some point, so.
Any other comments or observations? If not, all those in, do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're good.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay? Well, we're moving along again. Let's go to Item 12, and our commitment to the Indiana State Library Consortium.
That's me again, thank you, Ben. This is something that we do every year in August. This is a resolution that we ask you to approve to continue in the Indiana State Library Consortium for Public Library Internet Access. This is for what we call the E-Rate, which is the telecommunication and internet discounts. Federal funding for internet service and related services are available to public libraries from the E-Rate program, a program that the Federal Communications Commission oversees. And as part of the Indiana State Consortium, which we would like to join, as we have for many years, the state library hires a broadband vendor and an E-Rate consultant to provide E-Rate services for public libraries in Indiana. And our current discount for internet service is 90% due to being part of this consortium, so we would like to continue it.
And who actually provides the service?
The service is ENA, I believe.
DNA?
ENA.
ENA. Okay.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posed by nay? Okay. You're still up, Susan.
I'm still up. I have to say something that I think you might find amusing. So when we were doing our research for the DVD change, I reached out to Mike to get the current breakdown of what's the most popular format, and I have to say, you know, I worked in Los Angeles for many, many years, and I guess it's true that Los Angelinos don't read as much, because the DVD movie percentage is a lot higher in LA than it is here. So Allen County loves to read. Allen County loves to read. Not surprising. So I submitted a written executive director report. Um, we're still doing some final numbers on our Spark summer reading, but over eight million minutes of reading were tracked in the 2022 program, and the most read books, I thought this was fun, Harry Potter, Where the Crawdads Sing, The Bible, Dogman, Find Fergus, and Go Dog Go. So some eclectic choices there. Love it. Um, busy outreach season continues through August. We participated in events such as Open Streets and the Monroeville Harvest Festival Parade. I got to check off the box of riding in a convertible in the Monroeville Harvest Parade, so, and I think my picture made the paper, believe it or not. And we also are going to be at Taste of the Arts this weekend, I believe. And also, speaking of our busy programming and outreach season, um, come to us on Saturday night for our final Rock the Plaza concert series of the season. We have held interviews to fill our vacant safety manager position, vacated due to the retirement of John Heidi after twenty-four years, and we are grateful for his service. And late breaking news, since this report was written, we have hired a new safety manager. It is an internal promotion. Shannon Acker, who is our first shift security supervisor, will be promoting into the, um, security and safety manager role. So we're thrilled for her. We've also held interviews to fill the executive assistant vacancy, and I'm happy to report that we do have a hire who will start September twelfth. Her name is Elena Massey, and she comes from the East Street nonprofit. We spoke about the facility master plan at the August meeting of the Regional Arts Council, and they expressed their overwhelming support for the project. It was a very positive meeting. We're also preparing for Staff Training Day at the Mural Center on Monday, September nineteenth. And as a reminder, all library facilities will be closed, so the staff could go for this all-day training event. I will be sending out in the coming days a link to all of you, because all of you as trustees are invited for part of the day or the entire day. I'll be sending out a link in case you would like to join us for lunch, and you can request the lunch you would like to have.
Who's the keynote speaker? Are we having one?
We are having a keynote speaker. She is appearing virtually, and it is Ashley C. Ford, the bestselling author from Fort Wayne.
Oh, cool.
Yes, we're excited about that. You have at your place setting an invitation for a ribbon-cutting for our Storiescape Early Learning Center. That will be on Friday, September twenty-third at 5:00 PM. We will have the ribbon-cutting at the Storiescape, and then afterwards, there will be a reception for you as trustees, the foundation, the friends, and invited guests. And as you remember, the Storiescape was made possible through a very generous gift of twenty-five thousand dol-
Two fifty.
Two fifty, excuse me, um, quarter of a million dollar gift from the foundation. And if you haven't checked it out yet, I encourage you to go take a look because it is really something to see. The Friends of the Library are holding their annual meeting in about thirty minutes, um, so we are excited for that, and maybe we can make it over there. Wanted you all to save the date because former ACPL Director Jeff Crowe will be here as a featured author and presenter on Thursday, October twentieth at 6:30. He will be speaking about his debut novel, Single Wing, which we do have available at the library, and I believe he will be signing copies as well. And I was going to ask Beth to talk a little about this. Our Georgetown branch is piling a new after-school program to serve students from nearby schools such as Black Hawk Middle School, and the program includes homework help, craft activities, and guest presenters. And we have about fifty students currently enrolled, and Beth, do you want to give us an update on how that's going? And is it week three of school now?
I think we're, I think we're there. I think we're at week three now. Um, this is actually very exciting. This program was born out of a felt need because we've had seventy-ish middle schoolers coming to our library every day after school, and it's a lot. And if you've ever been in the room with seventy middle schoolers, it becomes a lot, a lot, even more after they've been together for a few minutes and they're done with homework. Um, so this, uh, program was created and spearheaded by our incredible teen librarian, Kara Sims, at Georgetown, um, with support from Stephen Platt, our Georgetown branch manager. And I want to especially shout out the queen of teen things at ACPL, Ayesha Holman, who's been a huge influence on helping to create this into a, a really successful program so far. What we've done is we've created a, a structured program for about thirty-five students every day, coming, spending time in our activity room with, uh, a guided schedule. They know what to expect. They get some snacks. There's some programming. Um, and it has taken the chaos down several notches, um, from where it's been in the past. The students are, um, having times where they feel seen. They're developing relationships with the staff members who we have in the space, and our outcomes have been amazing so far. Um, again, we're still seeing about seventy students, um, but with thirty-five or so in this program, um, all of the behavioral things that we have seen as being problematic in the past. In 2019, we had twenty suspensions per week from Georgetown branch, from this population primarily. And this year, it's been three so far, maybe four, depending on how you count, but really, really good for three weeks in. Um, we've built stronger connections to the teens' families because the people that have been enrolled in the program, their parents have signed off on the behavioral expectations, and we have better communication. They've given us permission to talk to the parents about the behaviors, which is not something we would typically do. Um, and there are clear expectations, so everybody knows what is expected of them. That's really helping middle schoolers, um, find their way forward in a kind of grown-up way as they're taking care of themselves after school. So I'm really excited to share this success of this program. I want to invite you to stop by if you're ever free between three o'clock and five-thirty or so. Stop by Georgetown. They would love to see you, um, to have you see, like, face-to-face what this looks like for our teens. And we're also looking for volunteers. Uh, so if you know of folks who might be able to make a commitment to, you know, regularly spending time with and building relationships with some, some middle schoolers, we have the opportunity ready to go. So thank you all so much. I'm very excited to share about this program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Susan?
That's it.
How about new business? Any new business come before the body? Hearing and seeing none? I see, would you like to say, yes, on the internet?
I got one comment from Kevin Wells, our IT Services Manager. He says, "Welcome to ACPL, Ayesha."
Which I'm sure is shared by everyone else here.
Yes.
Everyone's been very kind.
Okay, well, that concludes our August meeting. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose nay. We are adjourned. Following this meeting, we have an executive session.
Thank you.
No.
I make a dial-out appearance.
I understand.
Kim Bowlen is going to join us via Zoom for a sales session.
Okay. Did you have the documents that she had passed?
Yep.
I was going to try to print it, but I can't.